Good evening, good evening, Mount Vernon. Welcome to our board meeting, our regular board meeting, Tuesday, September 19. If everyone could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
Trustee Middleton?
Here.
Trustee Jenga?
Here.
Trustee Gail?
Here.
Trustee Lensey?
Trustee White?
Present.
Trustee Saunders?
Here.
VP Kelly?
Here.
And President Kerwin?
Here.
Okay, we have our quorum. And our student trustee, Anna DeLeon. Sorry about that. Is Anna here?
Yeah.
Hi, Anna.
Hi.
Good evening again. Dr. Smith has, the acting superintendent, has an emergency, so Dr. Gabitane will be filling in for her tonight. Welcome, Dr. Gabitane.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we're going to go to communication for the public. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at the meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for this speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Jerry Lorday.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Smith, who is not here today, with Dr. Gabitane in her absence, President Kerwin, members of the school board, and our community. My name is Reverend Jerry Lorday, and I am the president of the Mount Vernon Parent and Community Forum on Education, and a proud grandparent of a student at the Denzel Washington Performing Arts School, and the fundraising chairperson of the PTASA there. Tonight, I am here representing the forum. Monthly, we will be announcing Mount Vernon Parent Involvement Day. Twenty-six years ago, Parent Involvement Day was introduced to the Mount Vernon School District. The National African-American Parent Involvement Day was founded by Dr. Joseph Doolin. At a district school board meeting like this, the Mount Vernon School District officially institutionalized the celebration of the Mount Vernon Parent Involvement Day in our district. The Mount Vernon Parent and Community Forum and the Mount Vernon School District have partnered for 26 years on the second Monday in February to welcome our parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, mentors, and our students, and the Students Village, to this very important day. Parent Involvement Day is celebrated in every school in our district. Dr. Smith and her cabinet members, President Kerwin and the school board members, and Mount Vernon School District officials, school officials will also visit our schools. Each school welcomes you, our parents, welcomes you, our community, welcomes you, our Students Village. There will be food, workshops, and classroom visits. You will have the opportunity to meet and greet your child's principal, assistant principals, and other key administrators. In the coming weeks, there will be more information on our district, school, and PCA websites. We are especially pleased to announce that our parents and community members will be able to hear workshops in their native language. We want each of our parents, our Students Village, to have access to the information that will be provided. We ask you to spread the word, because Monday, February 12th, we'll be here before we know it. Thank you for allowing me to share and look for more information in the coming weeks. We are looking forward to a great 26th anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot Phipps?
Good afternoon, everyone, Mr. President and sitting Superintendent Gabitane, trustees. My name is Elliot Phipps. I am the owner of Tutor Doctor Mount Vernon. I'm actually a resident and from the Bronx. I've lived at Crotone Park most of my life. I am here today to expose or to put a focus on a existing crisis, a known crisis, and but to provide a solution as well. In March of this year, the NAEP, also known as the National Report Card, exposed the crisis in education post-pandemic. Fourth and eighth grade achievement declined as much as two to three grade levels in math and in reading. New York students lost twice as much ground to their peers nationwide. Put in a different way, only 33% of boys and 23% of girls were tested to be proficient. Our schools are doing what they can, however, it is impossible to bridge the two-year gap in one school year while teaching the current grade level. Here's where I come in. I am an entrepreneur and philanthropist, and I am passionate about changing the trajectory of student education's journey. I am an owner of Tutor Doctor, a global educational institution with a local presence. We provide individualized tutoring, in person or online. At Tutor Doctor, we use the school's curriculum to supplement and extend and expand learning. It starts with a comprehensive assessment to understand the student's acumen, learning style, interests, and aspirations, enabling us to match them with a tutor who can accelerate learning. We are a personal coach to enhance the classroom experience. Our focus goes beyond just an individual subject to helping develop critical thinking skills, to develop a lifelong of learning. I myself am a product of education in New York. My whole entire family has been involved in education. I currently sit on a K-12 board for a school in Mount Vernon, the north, under the Northeastern Conference of Seventh-day Adventists, which is why I established Tutor Doctor in the Mount Vernon area. I just want to make aware that we are a resource to the community and that we are here to serve and to enrich student learning where we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacqueline Simone?
Good evening. On September 5th during our congregation, the staff did hear, "Let your people call my people." Well, we are here in unity and in strength to make a statement. Let your people do what is right by the dedicated staff that sustains Mount Vernon schools. Do not forget that the staff is also your people. Let's make this clear. "Call my people" should include teachers, securities, TAs, guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, and all other various staff of Mount Vernon School District. Our district is now the lowest paid in Westchester and New York City. We ask that you negotiate in good faith and bring us to a pay and benefit level compatible to other districts in Westchester County. Keep in mind that there is a shortage of teacher, and this summer, we lost a high number of employees, and you will continue to lose employees if you do not negotiate in faith. Thank you.
Thank you. David Israel?
Hello, and thank you for giving me time to speak tonight. My name is David Israel. I am the treasurer and an executive board member of the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers. I began teaching here in Mount Vernon in September of 2005. This marks the beginning of my 19th year in the district. I feel very fortunate to have had the 19 years I've had so far here and enjoy being a part of the district and the community. But like myself, there are many teachers, teaching assistants, and security officers who come here on a daily basis and give all they can to educate and care for and inspire the youth of this town. Some days are hard, and some days are even harder, but we continue to be here and we continue to do everything that we can for this school district. I am proud to say I'm part of a union of like-minded professionals who give back tirelessly, even if it means personal sacrifice, such as giving up time to help students, spending our own personal resources and money to ensure student success, opening boutiques in schools to make sure that students have clothing and supplies needed for school, and donating food to ensure all kids can get educated without feeling hungry. During COVID, the members of the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers adapted, shifted, and worked hard to make sure our students still receive their educations and eased the emotional impact of the pandemic. We came in even when it meant personal health risks, not only to ourselves, but to our families. Since then, we have been here, helping to rebuild and forge forward. We all come in with a specific job title, yet we all teach, we all guide, we all feed, and we all care for the youth of Mount Vernon and work to ensure future success and opportunities for all of the students in our buildings. In fact, just this past June, the MVFT gave out over $25,000 in scholarships to help Mount Vernon graduates move forward with their post-high school education. We have helped in many other times of need as well, whether it be the yearly food drive, where we raise over $3,000 in money for the food banks, or our annual holiday gift program drive, or the countless donations we give when catastrophes such as house fires have impacted families. We have been there to support the families and the students of this town. We have done this while having our own personal setbacks. Cost of living is constantly increasing. Gas prices are high, and yet we still need to fill our gas tanks to come in each and every day to educate our students. We do more work all the time, yet without a raise, our money does less. We have watched as our neighboring districts have responded and given their staffs the increases that they have worked towards. We, the MVFT, have started another year without a contract. Many of us have not seen an increase in pay since 2021. We continue to fall behind the cost of living, and we now ask for there to be, I'm sorry, I'm hearing that chiming. We now ask you to be there for us in the same way that we have been for the community, with the same level of care, concern, and respect. My time's not up. That we demonstrate each and every day. We ask that you help us retain and attract the best professionals for our classrooms and for our students. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope we can work towards a resolution that works for all of us.
Thank you. That ends public comments. Reports to the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, Dr. Smith is unable to be here with us tonight. Well, we could go home. However, Dr. Smith would like to say thank you to all the principals, teachers, administrators, clinical staff, the custodian. A special thank you to the custodian at Benjamin Turner Academy for getting our school and classroom ready in a short period of time. Your effort are highly appreciated. Dr. Smith also would like to announce that one of the goals of Rebecca Turner Academy is to start a night school. She's happy to announce that we had our first planning meeting, and it was highly successful. We identified partners with a identified CTE program to come and aid our young people. Also, we excited to announce, starting tomorrow, Rebecca Turner Academy will start credit recovery from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and we are working feverishly to start after-school activities in every school. We anticipate October 10th will be the date, so please look out for more information. Dr. Smith is also happy to announce that Christian and Justin Combe, the son of PDD, will be giving out 100 sneakers to an elected group of our students. Also, one of the initiatives is having the right people on the bus. Dr. Smith would like to announce, as a way of motivating the students to join us on the bus, she will be awarding and having the bus visit the school with the best attendance in September. Dr. Smith also would like to welcome to our district, to the great city of Mount Vernon, Mr. Royce Russell, our in-house attorney. Let give him a great Mount Vernon welcome. And for tonight's superintendent's presentation, we have Dr. Cicello, our Director of E&amp;L in World Language, who will present part of the Curriculum and Instruction Team, the presentation on the cap, as well as on the translator. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Madam Vice President, Board Trustees, members of the Cabinet, Acting Acting Superintendent, Mount Vernon Community, and distinguished educators and professionals here this evening. Again, my name is Dr. Margarita Geraldine Cicello, and I am the director, the proud director, of the E&amp;L in World Language Department for the Mount Vernon City School District. Next slide, please. To begin our presentation tonight, this presentation came from a meeting I had with Trustee Kelly and Dr. Smith, Acting Superintendent, regarding Mount Vernon City School District Corrective Action Plan. In December 19th, 2019, the Mount Vernon City School District faced an inquiry from the State Ed Department Office of Bilingual Education and World Language. As a result of the inquiry and the data that we provided, we were put on a corrective action plan for the year 2020 to the year 2023. That was a three-year plan. The three areas were promptly identifying potential L students within the 10 mandated days, consistency of maintaining accurate records of Student Home Language Questionnaire, and scheduling Ls with appropriate programs, including Ls with IEPs. In June 8th of 2023, after appealing to the Office of Bilingual of Education, we had a visit from the team from the Office of Bilingual Education and World Languages. They chose the schools to visit it. They went on their own to the schools. They said, "We're coming on June 8th. Tell us the addresses of the schools." They appeared at Hamilton and Mount Vernon Leadership Academy. They spent the morning there. They observed instruction. Upon completion, they came back here, and they gave us a report, and the report that they gave was that they were very impressed with the academic rigor, the instruction that was provided to the students, and the student engagement between teacher-student, peer-to-peer, integrated co-teaching models, and just the overall excitement in the students that they observed. They returned August 17th, 2023, to end what we are now calling the Closed Mount Vernon City School District Corrective Action Plan, because the only thing left to observe was our registration process. At random, there was a family who came in, newly arrived, to the district. We helped them with the registration process. We did a paper application, because they did not have the technology at home to do the online. We provided them the services, the translated services they needed, and what came out of that day was that the family was not in our district. Their actual address put them out of our zone, but however, what we were able to do was put them in touch with the New York City Department of Education, the right school, got them the right assistance, and the state saw all of this in progress, as well as my interviewing the young child that was there. As a result of the hard work, not only of myself, because I am not, there's no I in team, I am nothing without my E&amp;L teachers, my bilingual teachers, and some of my world language teachers who are here this evening, but also without Dr. Doggett, Dr. Jones, Dr. Gabitane, Dr. Smith, my CNI team. We together pulled it off, where the state was very happy, very content, very pleased, and very proud to say that that was their last meeting, that they needed to come to the district, and that they are happy to report that they are closing the Mount Vernon City School District, Office of Bilingual Education, Corrective Action. Any questions before I move to the next slide?
A quick one. What's the ratio to student to teacher for the...
Well, to give you some data, just currently for this school year, 66 students tested out of E&amp;L, so that's 13% of the students that were tested. Out of 494, 66 tested out just by taking the NICE slot. The data is still not complete, because they have not released the ELA scores, nor the English region scores yet, but I'm sure that more probably would have tested out. Yes, we did make the target. Our data increases each year. It's not so much of how many test out, but also how many have moved from one level to the next. So our data has shown us that some of our entering students have jumped an entire level to transitioning and skipped emerging. So again, our improvement is up there.
Okay, but I wanted to know what the ratio...
It depends, because we don't isolate all of our E&amp;L students to one classroom team. So if there, let's say, for example, is 52 students in one of the schools throughout the grade levels, the ratio may be a teacher, 22 students, four of them are Ls, 18 or not. Okay? Any other questions? Next slide, please. So just to give you an overview of the E&amp;L and World Language Department, we are continuing the expansion of the Microsoft Translator. We are going to full implementation, and I'll cover that in the next slide afterward. So, Trustee Kelly, hang on with me just a little bit. I've got more wonderful news for you. We have a continuation of the following programs. We are continuing with Imagine Learning, K-12, Carnegie Learning, 7-12 for the World Language Department, Castle Learning, 9-12 for the E&amp;L Department at the secondary level. Seven of our high school students successfully received the Seal of Bilinguality, which is an additional certificate of honor on their diploma last year in the 22-23 school year. Our hope and ambition is to expand the Seal of Bilinguality to Mount Vernon Steam Academy in Denzel, Washington. Our dual-language programs are thriving. We have an expansion. We've increased now from K1 to now it's, the first grade has moved up to second grade. So we now have expanded a K1-2 dual-language at Hamilton and Mount Vernon Leadership Academy. We continue to provide professional development for our teachers, culturally responsive instruction. We have continued offerings at the Arburn, because 15% of a teacher's certification must be in E&amp;L moving forward, and that was implemented in 2014. We are focusing again, as we are going back to basics, both in scene on reading, writing, and arithmetic, on the four hallmarks of literacy, which do encompass speaking, reading, and writing, and listening. Next slide, please. How do we make learning fun in the E&amp;L and World Language Department? We have a lot of cultural events planned for this year. In fact, right now, we're in the throes of Hispanic Heritage Month, and each month actually does celebrate an ethnic background, so we are looking to put them in the forefront of all of our monthly celebrations. We have a contingency of students traveling to France from Mount Vernon High School in February. We are hoping to bring students at Steam Academy desiring to travel to Spain, and also to go back to, if you remember, Trustee White and Trustee Saunders, a few years back, we sent students to Germany to participate in the Global Summit. Well, the Global Summit for 2024-25 is to Panama, so they will be doing some research work in Panama, so we hope to increase that. We hope to bring back the Language Honor Society. We hope to have quarterly language honor roll celebrations, and... Next slide, please. So the Microsoft Translator Pilot, if you recall, last year, we put out the translator pilot to five schools, which had the highest population of entering and emerging students, Mount Vernon High School always being the highest. Mount Vernon High School currently has 142 E&amp;L students, but just to give you some background in our data, the district currently has 205 entering and emerging E&amp;L students. That means they're at the beginning 1-2 level of English language acquisition, which means they have no English language or just very minimal. We have 121 transitioning students in the district and 205 expanding students in the district. So that being said, 33% of the district's E&amp;L students of 619 are entering and emerging students. The highest frequency languages for entering and emerging students are 140 Spanish speakers, 43 Portuguese, 12 Arabic, 7 French, and 2 Haitian Creole, and 1 currently Russian refugee this year. So the Microsoft Translator Pilot provided not E&amp;L teachers, but classroom teachers to deliver instruction in a student's native language, so that they can take the exams that they are mandated to take in June in their native language or with a translator, I mean with an interpreter. So if you go to the next slide, this is just a recap of some of the important features new to this year, and as you recall in my presentation last year, I said that Mount Vernon has become the great influencer. Well, our story has gone on the road to the Tech Expo last year, which was well-received by districts that represented and actually came and sat in on our workshop, but just today, my counterpart from the Lyric Tech Specialist Dana Unger was presenting at Putnam Weather North Chester Bosse's, and she was using Mount Vernon as the example to hold a specific workshop for E&amp;L teachers, how you can use the translator, how you can use Google Lens to enhance and supplement your instruction for E&amp;L students. So this year, what Microsoft has done is Microsoft, because of our constant communication with them, and when they had the program blitzed last year, and we called them and told them how we were using it, they remodified it and now created a web app. So the 150 iPads are going to be used more for teachers, because once we get the web app to work in the district server, all the laptops will have the program on it, so we will not need the iPad for instruction, and it will not cost the district any money, because we have the laptops. So if you look at the young boy in the slide, that was our Arabic student from Graham last year. He's also a student with an IEP. What he's doing is the iPad is toggled over his textbook. That is a Google Lens. It takes a picture of it. It translates it to Arabic, and the reason he has earphones on is because it is now reading that text to him in his language. So he's now able to participate in classroom discussion. He's able to have a peer-to-peer conversation and be part of small group instruction. So these are some of the things we're putting in place. If you go to the next slide, please. The next slide is actually a demonstration video. That's Ms. Sanzi. That's his teacher. Last year, he had Ms. Calucci, which... Last year, he had Ms. Calucci, which, she couldn't make it tonight, but...
Ms. Sanzi and I are going to demonstrate how to use Google Translate to scan and read aloud text on a workbook page. So we're going to Google Translate and a camera. She's taking a picture of the text. And this is her student who reads in Arabic, or may not read necessarily in Arabic. And she's going to highlight the whole page, and then click on listen.
So that's just a demonstration of what Google Lens can do for our students in terms of reading their homework for them, that now they're more able to be more engaged and really get into the rigor that we provide in the district. So just to give you a little bit of a background, I know, Trustee Kelly, you asked me about the cost. Last year, we piloted it. It didn't cost us anything because thanks to Mr. Ramirez, we had iPads in the district that weren't used. This year, from Title III money, we purchased 150 iPads, battery packs, Carlos helped me, was the adapters? Uh-huh. Right, the adapters and the keyboards, and it cost us $60,000 of our Title III money, which is the second highest expense that I used for Title III. But then, if this web app works, the cost moving forward will be absolutely nothing to the district. So, and to answer, the next slide just shows you what the web app looks like on the iPad. So again, once we can get it to work through the district server, that some of the filters will be opened to allow the app to work. The teacher will have the iPad, and then we will be able to use those iPads for each building secretary, because the building secretaries are the first thing our parents see when they come in. So those parents will be, those secretaries will be trained in order to have a one-on-one conversation with all parents, and so that all parents will feel welcome and a part of the district. And the last slide. Couple of years ago, we piloted, we bought five machines. These are regular Xerox copy machines, but they have a translation software built in. We've used them now for the past three years. I have one in my office. I know now School Improvement has one. School Improvement just got a second one for the CNI. The print shop just got one. So Jennifer was one of the first ones who was really excited about it, Ms. Cardillo Rojas. So we are partnering with Xerox. If I buy one for each school, the cost will only be $36,000. And this will allow a building principal and her secretary to put all their communication out to the families. Those little backpack insert flyers can be in the languages that are spoken in the schools. So currently, the five that we have in the district have proven effective, but moving forward, getting one in each school, the building principal from their home, just by their district phone, can tap into the Xerox and send a message. So the K-12 alert or whatever alert can go out in that family's native language, and they can get it in many different ways. And again, this is not just servicing, which is our highest population of parents or our Hispanic parents, but this will also provide access for our other languages spoken in the district, because we currently have about 20 different languages spoken in the district. So that's my presentation. Any questions?
I just wanted to commend you and your persistence and the fact that you're bringing us into the 21st century, and you're creating diversity within our community that is welcomed. I really appreciate the work you do. Thank you very much, Dr. Silver.
Thank you.
How many pads do we have?
We have a total of, I just purchased 150 this year, and we had about 100, so I have 250.
So there are, are they in every school?
They are getting into every teacher's hands, yes, this week and next week.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this ends Dr. Smith's superintendent report.
Okay, we're on to committee reports. I would start to my right, Trustee Gail. Do you have any commi...
Oh, sorry. I almost forgot something very, very important. We're excited to announce that the EMT program will be at Rebecca Turner Academy, and it is done with the fire department at Mount Vernon High School as well. So we're excited to see that. Dr. Jones would love to add some comments.
How many, how many students? Dr. Jones, hi.
Good afternoon, everyone.
If you could tell them how many students will be part of the program.
We will be piloting with just about 20 students. Mr. Bryan, I'm going to turn you over to Mr. Bryan Simmons. We have a presentation for tonight, and Dr. Gabotan overlooked it. So we'll forgive her. Mrs. Simmons?
Good evening, President Kerwin, trustees, cabinet, and community. Just to expand a little bit upon what Dr. Gabotan just shared, we were in communications with Cool Nerd Prep, which is a nonprofit. It's the arm of Cool Nerd Connect, who we worked with last year in our Health Careers Program. And they presented an exciting option about bringing an EMT training program to Mount Vernon High School. Several students in Mount Vernon High School identified as being potentially interested. So we began these conversations. But in thinking about it, what really struck me was a few months ago, when we were really collectively imagining how we could better serve the Rebecca Turner scholars and tap into their multiple intelligences and the different ways they have to serve the community. And in attempting to find the funds to bring two worlds together was really difficult. It would be prohibitively costful. I had conversations with Mr. Silver with transportation, and it just couldn't happen. I had a lot of support in my CNI department. Dr. Jones and I spoke at quite length about it. We just couldn't make it happen. Ultimately, I picked up the phone and called Principal Newby and said, "Listen, we have an opportunity for your students to radically go back to basics." And by going back to basics, I mean being trained to save human life. And he said, "Mr. Simmons, I'll get those kids there." So there was a coordination effort with Dr. Pierce, Principal Newby, our CNI department, and this is going to move forward. And hopefully, this unprecedented level of coordination will be a model to follow, where with different schools collaborating, sensing one another's needs, we will have 20 students, maximum of 20, who will be trained. And before I go further, I know it's probably on some people's minds, I do have to say there was a negotiation back and forth. And Cool Nerd Prep did come back and offer us an $11,000 discount. They found a grant on their end, which made the deal very, very attractive. But this will begin, should this go through with board approval, at a minimum of 45 days from now. So it's a very exciting program. Currently, it's a pilot, and Cool Nerd Prep is looking to expand in the future this portfolio in possible phlebotomy and different medical services. So we really want to get a lay of the land right now and see what's possible for the future right now. There's also a conversation with Mercy College to see, maybe not in this particular cohort, or maybe, who knows, but for the accumulation of credit. So there are exciting things happening. This training will be happening at Mount Vernon High School, as I said, with both cohorts. And at this point, I would like to turn the microphone over from our representative from Cool Nerd Prep, Mr. Raymond Farkerson, who will get into some of the details here. So thank you for sharing this exciting news.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Raymond Farkerson, 468 North Fulton Avenue. I live in Mount Vernon. I don't think, ladies and gentlemen, there's not much I can add. I am the chairman of the Board of Cool Nerd Prep. Our purpose is to recruit your children to become professionals, teach them how to become the professionals in the profession that they are interested in. Wanting to be a nurse is great and admirable, but how do you become one? How do I make sure I'm a good candidate to get into nursing school? How do I make sure I stay in nursing school and graduate from nursing school? And that's what we are trying to do. So our hope here is with the EMT program, we will fund, we will offer up $11,000. We'll also offer all the charges to take the exam at the end of the program. So all the students who complete the program, we will sponsor that. Talk is free, right? That's true. So we hope that this is the beginning of something more meaningful. We want to talk to your children about becoming all the menu of things. We've started in the past summer. We have taken them, your children, to the hospitals. We have introduced them to professionals that look like them, talk like them. And so we actually had one of the Mount Vernon, I think he went to Mount Vernon High School, who started a radiology program in Harlem this two, three weeks ago. So that's the first, hopefully, of many. I could go on. So any questions? I'm sorry. Dr. Gabotan, nice to see you.
As always, thank you.
My pleasure.
I have a question.
Sure.
So they will be taking the tests, and will they be getting licensed to work as EMTs?
So they'll complete the course. I don't remember the number of hours. Those who complete the course, well, they have to be 17 before they sit the exam. At the end, they sit the exam. We will sponsor and pay for the exam. They will be licensed professionals to show up at your door should you have an emergency, yes, and they will be paid.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Will there be placement? Will there also be placement for the students?
We, Cool Nerd cannot, well, we're working with EMT and EMS organizations.
That's what I want to hear.
The demand is, you can Google that, it's out the door. So they won't have to try too hard to get a job, for sure.
I know, but it would be nice to have the bridge that goes to...
They'll have choices. So we'll offer the choices that we have access to.
Right, and that's what I'm asking.
And then, as well, the open market will also be their choice as well. No problem. Any other questions?
That's great news. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
I can't wait. Thank you. Been pushing for this. Thank you so much. Okay, so we go into committee reports. Trustee Gail, do you have any? Okay. Trustee Middleton?
I haven't really, I have not really committed before, but I do want to say that it was a great pleasure to go into three schools that, you know, listen, my allegiance is to all of them, but to go into three that, or to... May night. It was a pleasure to go into the three schools that I did on the opening of school, number one, which was Parker School. At Parker School, there was about, it was about 500 degrees in the cafeteria, but I say hats off and kudos to Mr. Ramondian team, who made sure that that was working right away. Building was clean, custodians, I want to applaud all the custodians. I went into Parker, I went into Rebecca Turner, and I know that, Dr. Jones, you guys were there. I went in, spoke to the principals, Graham School, everything was just great first day of school, I might say. So I do want to applaud those who got behind the scenes and everything that needed to be in terms of fixing, in terms of cleaning. It was great. And that's all I want to say, that, you know, principals, good job, continue to do it, custodians, and all those that are behind the scenes that's working it, keep working it.
Thank you. Trustee Mitchell? You have a report?
I just, I just have a quick report. Trustee White and Trustee Saunders and I were all on the Special Education Committee, and we're right now working on a sneakers wall for the children in the spring. So this way, you don't wear dress shoes, you wear your favorite sneakers. So I think it's going to be fun. That's all I have.
Thank you. Look forward to that and more information. Trustee Saunders?
Good evening. Good evening. I have one report for, I went to the IDA meeting on September 14th with the mayor, Sean Patterson Howard, the comptroller, Darren Morton, and the, Stephanie Vanderpoel, tax collector, yeah. So there was discussion about a new affordable housing project at 1 North McQuestion Parkway and 25 North McQuestion Parkway. The proposed $94 million project would include the construction of two... Speaking of the... Sorry, can you hear me? I'm sorry. You can hear me, I'm sorry. So the proposed $94 million project would include the construction of two affordable residential buildings containing approximately 229 units, approximately 115 in one building and 114 in building two. There will be 56 studio apartments, 89 one-bedroom apartments, 81 two-bedroom apartments, and three three-bedroom apartments. It'll have amenities and laundry and things like that. And this is going to be an affordable housing. So I just wanted to let the community know what's coming down the pipe.
Can I, is that, you said it was a pilot?
Affordable housing.
No, I'm saying, did they get a pilot? I don't, yeah, I'm just trying to understand.
So the mayor asked them to go back and do some type of cost-benefit analysis and come back. They were there the previous month, I think in August, when Trustee Gail was there, and they came back because they asked for a better design of the buildings to make it look a little bit more suitable for the area. So they came back and presented the, another scope of how the buildings would look, and that's what they came up with.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly, your turn.
Committee report?
Yes.
We don't meet till next week, I think, the Education Committee, but I did, I want to commend the staff of the Mount Vernon School District. I did visit the schools that I'm assigned to on the first day of school. What I was impressed by was the greeting, the faces of the people who greeted the students when they were coming in, the helpfulness of the staff. Okay, those grounds, they need a little work, but I did see that they were clean buildings, and as I was very impressed with the attitude of the people who work in the district. So I commend them on that. I can't wait to see more things happening in the schools.
Thank you so much. Trustee White?
We will be having a facilities meetings shortly, but I also went into Rebecca Turner. I spoke with the children. At that time, it was only like 18 kids there, but now they're up to almost 40.
Almost 50.
Almost 50 now? Okay, last count, I have 40. And I'm very impressed with what's going on in Rebecca Turner. And the EMT program is going to be a big successful thing. These kids, we have to offer them everything we can, because they are our children and we need to support them. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So the Security Committee had a phone call, a couple of phone calls over the past few weeks regarding SROs, and we're proud to announce we've got some developments that I don't, we haven't announced publicly.
Yeah, you can, yes.
So we were, we had some very positive phone calls with Deputy Commissioner of Mount Vernon Police Department, who secured two SROs that will be furnished by Mount Vernon Police Department. And we're supposed to have, they should be ready and trained up, I believe, in time for November. That was what was said, November 13th, and we're planning on the exact schools they're going to go to. We also, I actually attended a meeting with the, with city law enforcement and some city officials, just to discuss how, you know, all of us working together to try to make this safety net for our children with the help of the city and Mount Vernon Police Department, as well as the... Department, as well as the school district working together, which is where we want to go to, and find a way to make better communication that it's not just, well, we didn't know you were doing that and you didn't know we were doing that. We need to get to a place where we all are communicating together and we have, we can have much bigger turnouts and much more involvement. Instead of having 100 families come in just representing, you know, a couple of schools in the district, we can have maybe a couple thousand people show up because it's a city and school district thing. I think it's, you know, it's a very healthy idea. From the Audit Committee standpoint, I know that I, I made a request for an RFP for, an Audit of Special Education and DASSA reporting for the past three to five years. And I know that we've always talked about, it's been said that audits are needed very much, so I plan on also requesting a Buildings and Grounds Finance Audit Deep Dive, not of employees, but of the dollars that have been spent over the past three to five years. And then also, moving on to health and wellness, I want to shout out food service workers for one second, and I love every last one of everybody, my teachers in the building, I appreciate you, our building leads, our cabinet members, I appreciate everything that you do. So I don't speak just for myself either, I know we all do, but our food service workers are there before almost everybody else, right along with building safety, and they're preparing our food for our babies. I would also like to set up a time so that I can come in and do taste testing, so that I can see what we're feeding the children for breakfast and lunch and snacks, so that we're trying to adhere to a better nutrition-based diet for them, so that we're giving them the best of what we can when they're looking at other districts and just, not just in Westchester, but outside, we should be providing to them the most competitive and best foods that we can provide to them. There, a lot of them, you never know how many kids are relying on those meals, because those are sometimes the main and only meals they're going to get for the whole day. You never know. From a Buildings and Grounds perspective, also, I know I've been talking to Mr. Remundie, who has been extremely helpful, we've been talking about X-ray machines and scanners for our buildings, trying to make sure that they're up to snuff, and we're working on signage and things like that. So, and with Dr. Smith, very, very positive energy moving forward. And lastly, I also visited three schools, two of which are mine, and one of which that I shared with Trustee Njenga, which is the Honor Academy. I was able to drop my daughter off and get to say hello to a couple of kids, but went to Parker for, just for a couple of minutes, and their playground is amazing. Okay, their new playground that they got, like the last time I was there, I walked with Ken Silver, and it was really in really bad shape, but it's amazing. You really have to see it now, it's just beautiful. I took pictures. It's a brand-new playground, it looks amazing. So, you know, kudos to everybody that made that happen. But I went to Williams School and giving high fives to the kids in the morning, it was hot as blaze, but they were just happy, and they were glad to be at school on the first day and just giving kids high fives, you'd be surprised. That energy that they were giving you back, it kind of broke that first day of school ice. Everybody, I'm glad, I'm glad all of my, all of my fellow trustees that showed up, I'm certain that it made a difference. I'm just glad to, we were able to do that. So that's all I got.
Thank you so much, Trustee Mitchell. And so we have a student trustee.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So the only thing I really have to announce is that Mount Vernon High School will be having their second pep rally. We're hoping for more unification among the schools, so STEAM Academy and Denzel Washington will be attending, and we will also have our senior initiation to kick off the senior year. And I also wanted to commend the teachers that came in today because many of them are mentors to me at my own school, and I really appreciate them, and I just wanted to let them know that.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Yes. And so for, for, for me, as far as committee, um, committee reports, we, we have not met yet for the Budget Committee. We will be meeting this week with the Controller, Dr. Morton. So next meeting, I will be reporting out on what our meeting was all about. But I have good news. I have good news that Iona University, I was able to renew the partnership with Iona University, and now they will be coming back into the district. I met with Melissa Solis and Dr. Smith, and so they are coming back into the district, not with an after-school program, however, it, the program now, the Artificial Intelligence Program, will be in, will be taught in the curriculum. And it will be taught in two schools. It will be at Nelson Mandela School and at STEAM School in the curriculum. So that is really good news. Thank you, yes. I'm so excited. The kids will be way ahead with artificial intelligence, hopefully not too advanced, right? The way AI is taking over now, but I'm glad that they will be getting a head start on that. And I also have good news because a new initiative for the district, and it's called the Health Wellness, Health and Wellness and Fitness Initiative. I was thinking about something that, a project that the whole school district could be involved with, and so I came up with the Health and Fitness Challenge, and it's going to be a challenge, yes. And so when I thought about this, I, I was thinking, who can I get on board to, to help me carry this out? And of course, I went to a guru here, a fitness guru, Dr. Doggett, and also Trustee Gail. So what we are going to do is that, and it's going to be launching in October, but for now, so you're going to hear more about it in October, but I just want to brief you on it. What is, it's going to be, it's a challenge, right? We're going to have everyone get involved with fitness, wellness, we have everybody eating right, exercising, and we also going to have a fitness challenge with, it's going to be in January, I think after the holidays. I want it before the holidays, but they, you know, they said after the holidays. Where, we're going to have three winners. If we go, I'm not sure if we're going to call it the Biggest Losers, right? Biggest Losers Challenge, is that what we're going to call it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We're going to call it the Biggest Losers Challenge, and we're going to have first place, second place, and third place, and it's going to be priced, there's going to be money involved. And so we, I want everyone, it's not mandatory, it's not a mandatory initiative, it's by voluntary, but however, I encourage everyone to get involved because we want to, you know, we, we are learning, and I know Dr. Smith says she wants the fun part of it, and here is the fun part. So we're going to exercise, we're going to encourage everybody to eat right, we're going to roll out our exercise plan, our food plan, we encourage parents, teachers, students also, because then when, if parents are involved, then kids get healthier meal at home. So we are, we are about to kick it off in, Trustee Kelly, I'm not done. So we're about to kick it off in October. Dr. Doggett or Trustee Gail, do you want to add anything to it?
You pretty much said it all, but I also think we're going to have a Fit On app.
Yes.
Where we're going to have an app where parents can join an app that calculates their steps and exercise. We're going to also have a spot on the website where we can post information, upload pictures and testimonials throughout the journey from October until May. And we want to have some culminating activities with the students, maybe a push-up, pull-up, dip contest. We may have a walkathon and some other things that we have planned. So we're in the infancy stages of planning, and we're going to roll this out to the group in October.
Yes, and we met today, the committee, some of the committee members met today, so we were able to have, build out a framework, thanks to Dr. Doggett. We have a framework that we're going to start from October all the way to May, right, of next year?
Yes.
Yes, for the whole school year.
I'll reserve my questions until you get your committee.
Okay.
You're welcome to join us to, for fitness and wellness.
Well, then if, sorry, she said, she was, I'm sorry, just a step in, forgive me. I, if you're...
I, I heard you, I heard you. We have something for everybody to participate in. So everyone can reach their goal at their fitness level, is what you're asking.
Thank you.
It's differentiated.
What I was going to say is, I would recommend that you do it by schools because it's kind of, and raise some type of money for the schools, so that's why I'm saying infancy. So if you're doing it that way, maybe. And who's, and we are going to have access to fields and pools to do this?
Fields and pools, and the tennis court, tennis court, definitely, for all, for those of you who love tennis, playing tennis, I love playing tennis, the tennis court will be open before it starts to get really cold, Saturday and Sundays, right? Mr. Silver? I know you're watching me. Yeah, we've been asking for the tennis courts to be open. Also, Memorial Field is open, they have time slots where you could go around the field, and also the high school track is also open. And we, I, I also mentioned today in the committee that I will be contacting local gyms to see if our members, school district employees could get discount at their gym. So we have a lot of things coming up, just so the whole district could get involved. So please, then, we will be coming out, rolling out our, our fitness plan very shortly. So stay tuned. This is my idea, and I went to him. He's a guru, yes. He will be spearheading this.
Yes, he is.
From March, was it, from October to May, fitness, June, July, and August, y'all can do what y'all want.
That's fair. And that is my report. Do we have any old business? Yes, um, no. Just look forward to the after-school program to get started in October, after we roll out a successful after-school program, then we'll, next year will be, then we'll be billing out a before-care program, that's before school starts. So looking forward to a successful after-school program. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to resolutions. We have a motion for 5.1, Human Resources 98 certified.
Motion, second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? Putting your book?
Oh, no, that's down further.
So the student advisor is the person who helped with the eighth-grade prom, the yearbook, the end-of-the-year event for the students, they raised funds so their students will have a wonderful end of their middle school year. A traffic, and I think other schools also has that person.
So there's different ones, so you'll see throughout the year, so every school does do it, though.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 5.2, Human Resources 90B, classified. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 6.1, Authorization to Compensate Staff for the Gifted and Talented Curriculum Alignment Committee. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. We have a motion for 6.2, Authorization to Pay Staff at Benjamin Turner Academy Additional Hours to Inventory, Catalog, and Complete Receiving Reports. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 6.2, Authorization to Pay Staff at Benjamin Turner Academy Additional Hours to Inventory, Catalog, and Complete Receiving Reports. Questions, concerns, discussions?
What exactly will they be inventorying, cataloging, and what report to completion of receiving reports? Can you just give a little understanding as to what that is, that we're doing?
Yes, so, oh, excuse me. Yes, so as the books and supplies come in, they have to inventory the materials, make sure that the, what was ordered is coming in, check it off, and send it out to the teachers. We have a lot of books that come in, foundations, we have classroom libraries that come in, a lot of workbooks and materials, that stuff comes in, gets itemized inventory, we make sure what we're paid for was ordered and distributed to the teachers in a timely fashion. And Benjamin Turner, at the last meeting at this time, didn't have any names. Didn't have any names because this resolution was approved at the September 5th meeting, and Benjamin Turner at the time didn't have any people on the resolution at that time. So there are still books coming in, there's still books that have to be inventoried and distributed to the teachers.
And that's for this school year?
That's for this school year, correct.
Good evening, everyone. So this was to clear out the gym. There were, normally you have reading teachers come in, they receive all the supplies, and they sort them to the classroom libraries. That was the day I was there, and there were some other items in the gym, we couldn't do the volleyball, so the principal and I walked around, we recruited two teachers to sign up for this. And so this would have been done over the summer if teachers volunteered, so this is just addressing the issue of what Dr. Doggett said.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 6.3, Authorization to Pay Staff for the 2023-2024 MTSS School Teams at all K-8 Schools. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 6.4, Authorization to Hire Staff for No Place For Hate School Teams. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Abstain.
We have a motion for 7.1, Authorization to Approve the Mount Vernon City School District District Comprehensive Improvement Plan and School Comprehensive Education Plan for the 2023-2024 school year. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 7.2, Authorization to Approve 2023-2024 SEP Leadership Team Staff. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Which one are we talking about, 7.2? Okay, so the, the School Comprehensive Improvement Plan is a requirement from the state that all building has to create with plans as to how they're going to improve the school. Now, you're seeing these two buildings because at the time when the others were approved, Rebecca Turner Academy was not Rebecca Turner Academy, so we had to redo their plans, so this is what you're hearing. And also Denzel Washington at the time did not have a principal, and so Denzel Washington School is just creating theirs. So this is what, why you're seeing these buildings, these two buildings, the other buildings were approved on a pro- The other buildings were approved on a prior board meet, at a prior board meeting.
For those in favor? Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 7.3, Authorization to Disperse Stipends for Providing Program Services for the Operating of the Purchase College Great Potential Program at the Denzel Washington School of the Arts, Mount Vernon Steam Academy, and Lincoln School. Questions, concerns, discussions?
These necessarily are not employees of the district. So the Great Potential Liberty Partnership Program is a grant operated through SUNY Purchase. They choose the employees, they pay them directly. The employees actually service our students, they provide tutoring by college student, they provide college and career, they provide social-emotional learning. Actually, we're expanding from being only in the high school to also including a K-8 school. It is monitored by Jackie Smith, Certified School Counselor. The counselors meet, the teachers meet, they use data to improve the students. I believe this is our 17th year with the Great Potential Program. And in the last 17 years, in every school it operates, the top 30 are all great potential students.
So so these these particular people apply for, not from, not to us, they apply to the?
No, so one of the things you'll notice they all have in common, they're school counselors. So they have to know the New York State graduation requirement, they have to have an understanding of social-emotional learning because they're also providing not only after academic skills, soft skills, they're also counseling the students. So many of our students are average student. So one of the model of great potential is from average to great. The counselors do an extensive work throughout the year, they do workshop. Cool Nerd actually was one originally came to our district to great potential. And what they do is, the school counselors do it because the school counselors know what the students need.
Who is, who is, basically, who's monitoring or tracking the benchmarks for the services that are being provided to ensure that we're paying these stipends and what we're paying for, we're actually getting? Who's monitoring that?
I am. So I've been monitoring this program for 17 years. Out of all the other program that was removed from the district, this was the only one that has stayed all this time. I keep track of the student doing the program and up to four years after graduating from the, from our school district. Currently, I'm proud to say this program has produced six lawyers, seven doctors, eight nurses, and currently, we have three of our students at Ivy League School from the Great Potential Program, including a former student trustee who started with our program. So this is one of my pride and joy. I really enjoy the Great Potential because all the funding comes from a grant. The money does not come from general fund at all, and our student benefit 100%.
So Dr. Gabitan, this is after school that these counselors work?
Yes, everything is done after school. One of the thing that we also do is we monitor services. Every month, they have to turn into Jackie Smith at Purchase, a whole event from two, the college students come in and provide one-on-one tutoring, math, science, English specifically. The counselors also have to provide 10 hours a week of social-emotional, one-on-one counseling, group counseling. It's almost having a private counselor that your parent is paying $20,000 for. That's how the program is run.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 7.4, Authorization to Approve MBK Fellows Program, Staff, and Stipends. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries.
What are you doing? Sorry, I'm leading my question for this one. I'm sorry. We already passed it. Can I ask questions still? Again, I'm going to ask the same type of question. How are we, how are we monitoring that, what they're doing for MBK? These are dollars that we're spending. How are we monitoring that?
Again, this is another one of the program I monitor. The My Brothers Keeper, this is our, we're going to be our fifth cohort. Ruiano Adam was an MBK Fellow, student trustee currently at Harvard University. The way the program works, Cornell, I'm sorry. The way the program work is our students, same thing. The way the program work, our student receive mentoring from a community partner. This grant actually require we have a community partner. In this case, this year, it's Eric Crump from the mayor's office, he will serve as a mentor. And then we have one of our educators also serve as a mentor. The students will be reading three books this year. They are reading Dr. Wyatt's book, Met Truth, and they go to a mastermind, five weeks of book study where they learn how their environment do not define them. They are also going to be reading When I Was Puerto Rican, and they are going to be reading a brand-new book today. I don't want to give it up because it's a surprise. We will have a special guest reader. Last year, they read from Robert Kiyosaki, Rich Dad Poor Dad. And one of the goal was for the students to start a bank account because they do get a stipend. The students also go to Albany where they present their service learning project. They have to do a project that gives back to the community. And it's a TED-style project. And the person who trains them is Principal Caffeli. So it is a program that is designed to create young men to leadership. And our goal this year is actually not only have My Brothers Keeper, but also have MBK ambassadors in all our school, start grooming all our students to become MBK Fellows.
We have a motion for 7.5, Authorization to Hire Staff to Conduct a Credit Recovery Program at Rebecca Turner Academy. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 7.6, Authorization to Approve the Emergency Medical Technician Certification Training for the 2023-2024 School Year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 7.7, Appointment of Technology Links for the 2023-2024 School Year. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can somebody just give us a little background on that?
So.
With even M, President of the Board, his president, trustees, cabinet, acting superintendent, representing the president. Yes, I I just want to refer, this is the, this is the body of people that support our instruction of technology in every school building. They directly work in the school building with the principals, so they support the school building leadership with every initiative that we have. This year particularly, we have not only everything with devices and distribution and replacing devices that are aging, but we also have supporting the classroom for software and integration for the instruction of our students. We have big plans also with the data. Dr. Jones can probably give more detail about that further in another meeting, but we are going to implement a data dashboard district-wide that will have all the information of the students at the fingertips of the teachers, administrators in the school buildings. And this thing is key for that implementation. So that is the purpose to have the tech links again in every school building. We actually change the quantity based on enrollment of the schools, and we are supporting our high schools now that they have to do online assessments with SATs. We have to support CBT implementation in fifth and eighth grade, and that's basically the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 8.1, Approval of Student Services, Pupil Personnel Services, Member Random Number Four, dated September 9th, 2023. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Questions, Dr. Gabitan. Could you explain that a little bit?
So in order for our students to be, to have special education needs, we have to have a committee that comes together to serve for CSE. So that is the first one. In order to make sure, we also have our students who need Section 504. We must have the school psychologists, the clinician teams to evaluate as well as teachers. So that's what the first one does. We have a few students who are unable to come to any of our buildings, so we still are required by New York State law to provide homebound instruction. And the law has changed. Elementary school now is required for two hours, high school is three hours. So we've hired additional staff to provide virtual instruction for those students in order to ensure every student is still getting an education. Welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 8.2, Authorization to Approve the Youth Leadership Institute at Lincoln School.
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question, can can we just get a brief understanding as to what this is? And is this just a pilot just to start at Lincoln and then eventually expand to other other buildings?
This is the second year of this program. It is done by the Zeta Nu Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha. This older volunteer that they had last year will come, they fill out the district volunteer form. Since if they are fingerprinted, I collect the fingerprint to make sure that they pass par. The principal interview them, but they work with our boys and girls as mentor. One of the things the district is piloting is to have community mentor mentor our student. Studies show that students who have mentor are more successful. So that's what this program does. This is its second year at Rebecca Adam, Lincoln School, and I'm hoping it will spread and more community members will volunteer their time to support our students.
I think we passed a board resolution last year for that.
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
How was it determined which school building they go into?
So Ms. Jones has a connection with the Alpha Kappa Alpha sorority, and she brought her fellow sorors in to be part of the program. And actually, we use her program as a pilot to create the application, to create the questions we'll be using with our volunteer that comes into our community. By the way, we do amazing things in the Mount Vernon City School District, just saying.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 9.1, Authorization to Reject Bid for RFP Number 2022, 2020, 2022, 23-08, After-School Enrichment Program Services. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can we just have some clarity as to why we're rejecting the bid?
So the RFP team consisting of our purchaser and several others went through the proposals we received. Most of them did not have all the component of the RFP, so we have to go out and put it out again. One of the companies was a babysitting service, did not provide really any after-school activity, and another one would service the limited amount of our schools. I know myself, Dr. Cicello, and some others, we looked at it. You know, the RFP was also missing insurance, so none of the ones we received met the qualification that we need to service our students.
I just want to point out, this was in response to President Corwin. You had asked us to increase our budget to have more after-school programs. So we solicited responses to try to ask people, what would you like to do? Do you want to run a program for us? And what would that program be? And so we were dissatisfied with those responses, but that was in response to the budget being increased to include extra money for after-school programs.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries.
Sorry, I have a question. So we will be going back out to bid for the RFPs for new RFPs. Okay.
We have a motion for 9.2, Authorization to Accept the Donation of Speakers for the Walk Fresh Sneaker Giveaway.
This is Ramon Christian.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So how is this going to be conducted? So, yeah, explain to me who gets an invite, please.
So, yes, so I was told, I'm sorry that she's not here, Nikita, Nikita, sorry, who is a parent liaison. She is the one who is spearheaded this. This is PDD Sons, and they selected the students. She had conversation with the guidance counselors, and they selected students to donate these sneakers to. I don't know the criteria, I don't know the criteria.
They were nominated, though, by the guidance counselors?
Yes, yes, and it will be held tomorrow at City Hall between four, between four and six tomorrow at City Hall. Yeah, that's all the information I know because they invited me, so I was asking background.
Just, just you? Okay.
Exactly. I was, I just said that they invited me, so that's all the background information that I have, but all are welcome.
It is the royal we.
All are welcome to attend. Thank you, trustee.
20 students from five schools equal 100.
Yes. Trustee Kelly, please check your your text messages.
We love each other in this place.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 10.1, Authorization to Pay Tri-County Movers for the Move Between Benjamin Turner Academy, Rebecca Turner Academy, Mount Vernon Board of Education, and Mount Vernon High School. Second. Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, yeah, I got a quick question. I want to, just to, just to be certain, this is related to the move between Benjamin Turner, Rebecca Turner, and folks moving from the board to the high school. Was this completely handled by movers only? Or did we involve, or was the school district employees involved at any point? Was this, did they, did this company facilitate the entire move? In other words, did they earn every dollar that we're paying them at this point? Or did we at any point start enlisting, you know, I know that a lot of our internal folks, our custodian staff, they're very eager to help, our grounds people are very eager to get involved. I want to know that every dollar we spent with this moving company, they handled every bit of this work, undoubtedly.
So, yes. So this, this move encompassed the merger of both buildings, the abatement that was done here at the Board of Ed, and then moving the furniture back to the Board of Ed. So our grounds crew and our custodians, so the custodians helped assist the movers on where to put the items, and then the movers did the majority of the load of moving from building to building, and the custodians showed them where it was going to go. For the grounds crew also, they handled the majority of the other moves, which also interfered with the upkeeping of the grounds because there was, you know, only a handful of people, so it was moving the items to the buildings and then dealing with, you know, manicuring the grounds and that sort of thing. But this year, they only handled these moves here. It was done after hours, they worked from about nine to five every day, they worked on Saturdays. So we needed them to come in and facilitate this so we could get schools open and get all the abatements done in time.
And remember, they also packed up every teacher's stuff in their room from Rebecca and moved it all over to Benjamin Turner.
Thank you for pointing that out. They did, they packed up all the items, and we asked the teachers, would you like us to unpack it, or do you want to unpack it? And so they took a list of every teacher saying, you know, we'll unpack your stuff, or no, I want to unpack my stuff, and they placed it there. So they actually made the custodians work a lot easier, and we didn't have to task the grounds crew with the already scheduled moves on top of, you know, the unscheduled moves like this.
They did a good job, I have to say.
And they did it very quickly. And they actually came in substantially lower than all of the other companies that we had.
That's my question.
on top of, you know, the unscheduled moves like this.
They did a good job, I have to say.
And they did it very quickly. And they actually came in substantially lower than all of the other companies that we had.
That's my question, 'cause right now, is there a dollar amount attached to this resolution? 'Cause I don't see any attachment.
Yes.
Was it? 'Cause it's not there now. I'm sorry. Oh. I don't see.
It was in here.
Okay, all right. No, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking at the board. Excuse me. Give me yours. Okay, thank you. That's what I needed to say.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.2. Authorization to use AutoClear for the purchase of X-ray scanner machines?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, uh, Mr. Ramaldi, um, was able to get these, uh, the AutoClear quotes. Um, and he has attached to this resolution all the other quotes from the places that he's called. Even though it wasn't an RFP out, but he did do the, he did attach the quote, which is what I asked for to be more transparent. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I have a question regarding the fact, was no RFP needed for this? 'Cause normally wouldn't we have needed one? What was the reason why we didn't need one for this? Please, yes, Nick.
Check. Okay. So I figured there'd be a few more questions. So with this here, we had approved vendors from New York State, um, OGS. So what I did was I contacted, very few vendors actually carry this machine. And so in contacting appropriate authorized vendors, I found that they all act as middlemen for one company, which is AutoClear. So once I was able to finally locate vendors that even carry this machine, every quote, you know, one of the vendors, uh, said, oh yeah, well, AutoClear will come in and do X, Y, and Z. And I said, AutoClear will come in? And he said, oh yeah, we buy the machines from them. They ship it to the schools. They'll install it and they'll train you. I said, okay, send me a quote. So I call AutoClear. I get a quote from them. And it comes in around $26,000 less than the best quote I got to buy directly from the manufacturer. So after following the appropriate procedures of getting three quotes from approved vendors, I was able to suggest that we go right to the source and save money for the exact same product.
They have been money.
Thank you. No more middleman.
So how, how much are we saving? How much are we saving? I remember you, you had a figure to us.
We, we, we're saving $26,000 for the same items from the lowest bid. So the bids came in 93,000, 99,000 and change, 101,000 and change. Their bid comes in around 67,000 for four machines. So now we were proposing to buy two machines. With the savings, we can buy four brand new machines and utilize them throughout the district. So it, I think this is a win-win.
Thank you so much, Faith Diligent. Thank you.
At one point, should we see those machines in place?
So AutoClear sold 49 machines in the last two weeks. They sold 25, they sold 20, and they sold three. They're actually building the machines now. So because they're the only provider, they're on all the government contracts. They do all the airports, the train stations, the prisons. So the gentleman who I'm working with said, you know, says, Mark, listen, I'm gonna build them as fast as I can and get them to you. But he's figuring, he quoted me at first, end of October, November. I said, I needed them yesterday. He says, let me see if I can get them to you by the middle of October. I said, please put a rush on it. Again, at no additional cost, but just to show the need that, you know, we need these machines. So they're being built literally, um, as we speak. No, it's a one-year warranty that's included on everything, uh, which is no different than any other manufacturer. If we wanted to extend the warranty, two years, three years, four years, five years, there's an additional cost. And with the savings, we could do that. We don't have to make a decision just yet. But it's something that we can table at our security committee and decide if we want to do something like that.
That we normally to be paid, do we have something like that?
So with these machines, and I also looked into leasing. Nobody leases them because they're essentially built to order. They don't lease. So AutoClear will service the machine regardless of a warranty. It's just once the warranty expires, then there's a, there's a fee to be charged. So again, we have to look at the, you know, how long they're gonna last. We don't want to overpay and buy an extended warranty for something we're not gonna utilize and waste money. But if it's gonna have a significant return on our investment, it might be something to explore.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Have a motion for 10.3. Authorization to use Northeast Environmental for the removal and abandonment of all district oil tax. I need a second?
So I thought we...
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Sorry, I thought we already, um, approved this resolution. This is like the third time I'm seeing this. Is there any specific reason why it's on tonight again?
Yes. So you did approve, uh, this, something like this. So what was approved in the past was a company called American Petroleum. When we went to go utilize them for this removal, the price quote we received was over a year, almost a year and a half old. And they raised their prices about $55,000, the same scope of work. So at that point, I said, well, let's go to another OGS vendor. We found Northeast Environmental, which is on the resolution behind you. And they came in, in total, because they're all, they came in at a lower price for the same work. And they're gonna file all the building permits for us and complete all the inspections. So it's gonna save us $68,286 to provide the same scope of work. And they can start immediately. So.
Uh, trustee Mitchell says, do we have that in writing?
Yes, I have, um, I can, I can get you the invoice, but yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.4. Authorization to pay staff for district-wide bus monitors? Um, questions, concerns, discussions?
Yes, I wanted to pull that. But I wanted to pull it to have a discussion and exact for, before I voted on this. No, no, I, I, no.
Have a motion to...
So, um... The reason we need this is a few weeks ago, the bus company came to us and says they didn't have enough monitor. There is 124 bus monitor for first. Okay.
No, if I can jump in. So this is the before-school and after-school supervision of bus drop-offs and pickup.
Not yours, not yours. No, not yours. I wanted to approve. I wanted to, um, pull that other one.
So this one you're okay with, the other one you wanted to...
No, I want this one pulled.
Okay.
This is the one for, um, putting kids on the bus and taking them off in the morning and afternoon.
Correct. So whoever's here is usually, they show up a half an hour before and a half hour after.
Can we do that? Yeah.
Can I, can I have a motion to pull 10.4? Authorization to pay staff for district-wide bus monitors? I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. To pull 10.4. May I have a motion for 11.1? Authorization to enter into a contract agreement with Professional Preparation Associates LLC? Need a motion? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 12.1? Authorization of a settlement agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and former employee number 1392? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 12.2? Authorization to amend the 2023-2024 Board of Education meeting calendar? Questions, concerns, discussions?
Do we add the Lunar New Year? That is a new holiday. I'm asking, Agent. I'm looking out for my people in the district. There's another holiday on the board.
It's a new holiday, but this is the board meeting calendar, not the teacher's calendar. We have to come to work on that day, unfortunately, or fortunately.
Sorry, Steph.
All, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 12.3? Authorization to amend code of conduct number from 5300 to 7300?
Second.
No, I know a second, but who was the first one? Oh. Questions, concerns, discussions?
So one of the biggest projects we have in the district is to renumber our policy. 5300 is the current number New York State is using. Unfortunately, we are still using student, uh, policy is 7,000, which is from 2006. So I wanted to make sure our policies are consistent. However, a big project this year is to redo our entire policy, renumber them, to align them to New York State. But more than that, to make them clickable, that anyone could click on them and know exactly what the policy say. So we are in the midst of this project. Our in-house lawyer and I spoke about the scope of the work and we will be in the middle of it this year. But we didn't want to change things and keep continuity as it is. But it will be changing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 13.1? Authorization to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Oh. We will be coming back. Um, we will go into executive for about, how long? You said, um, probably about an hour. And after, we will be returning from executive session. So please bear with us. Thank you.
Yes, you, you...
Have a motion for 13.2? Authorization to return to public session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? All right, here you go. We're gonna go back to, um, 10.4. Have a motion for 10.4? Authorization to pay staff for district-wide bus monitors?
Oh, shit.
Second? Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 14.1? Authorization and approval of a certain letter to be sent to said staff member. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 15.1. Amendment of the needed.
All right.